Could we have a roll call, please, Mrs. Kennedy?
Yes, Mr. Decanter?
Present.
Mr. Cole is absent. Ms. Sweeney?
Present.
Mayor Holliday is absent. David, Mr. Hawkeizer?
Here.
Ms. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Menon?
Here.
Two absences.
Thank you. Could we stand for the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before we begin our section of public comment this evening, I would like to clear up what I've heard as a rumor that we are going to be taking a vote this evening on later start times. That is not the case. That has never been on our agenda for this evening. It wasn't our intent. We are still very much in the information gathering stage. We will be discussing more facets of this issue this evening. So I want to thank you for your attention to that. At this point, is there anyone who would like to make a public comment? Please step forward, state your name, your address.
Hi there.
Hi.
Thank you for hearing us tonight. My name is Erin Hobbs and I am the Science Department Chair. And with me this evening is Lynn Cody. She works here at the high school as well and she is the Department Chair for Student Support. And we are speaking as and on behalf of the Department Chairs and members of our department. So first off, we would like to applaud the parents for getting involved in the late start issue, but we do want to address it as a faculty. Our goal as parents and teachers is always to do what is in the best interest of all students. In November, the faculty at Newburyport High School were asked to take a survey on the late start time. Many teachers questioned the validity of the survey. The information from that survey has not yet been shared with the faculty at NHS yet. Since then, the Department Chairs of Newburyport High School reached out to our faculty asking for input into the late start proposal. Simultaneously, Department Chairs independently looked at the research on startschoolslater.net as well as other reputable studies on late start. We looked at several districts, two in Massachusetts including Ashland and Newton that have been working on a later start to the school day and nationally to Seattle where they have implemented a late start. After looking at the research, conducting interviews, considering the survey results from the school administered student survey, we believe that this issue requires a systematic study, one that is rooted in the best interest of Newburyport. We are proposing a working group similar to the Newton Public School Working Group that would be charged with looking deeply into this issue of late start times specific to Newburyport High School. This working group would consist of students, teachers, administrators, school committee members, parents, and the business community. This cannot be done haphazardly or quickly as moving the start time would lead to systematic shifts that should be anticipated and planned for.
The models that we looked at, Newton, Ashland, and Seattle, all studied the implications of a late start time before implementing it. They came up with multiple plans and numerous options before voting on one. The working group would be tasked with the following: getting input from all stakeholders; explore and consider multiple options for late start times; synthesize the research on late start, both pros and cons, and follow up on why districts who do support this science have not yet made the change; explore and consider some of the effects of a late start at Newburyport High School, including the academic effects such as students and faculty coaches who will perpetually miss G block; excessive absenteeism from class, how do these students make up their work; extracurricular effects, sports, club, theater, are we asking students to choose between a class or an activity; student employment effects, our community; impact on our G block internship program, which if you remember is why the high school changed our schedule two years ago to accommodate for that; impact on our new flex classes, will they need to shift to a later start as well or are we impeding students from taking flex? And how does this fit into our five-year strategic plan? How does the effect of the students' minimum mandate of nine hundred and ninety hours of academic time on learning impact? One final note and it bears repeating. The teachers at Newburyport High School remain open-minded to looking at a later start time. We are not opposed to the idea of the change. However, best practices dictate that the logistics and their intended as well as unintended impact are looked at carefully before any action is considered. Thank you.
Could we have a copy of that, please? Thank you. Is there any other public comment at this time? Yes.
Hi, I'm Charlie Lake, a student at Newburyport High School. My address is Five Woodman Way, Newburyport, Mass., number 108. And I'm here to represent the students concerned about the way Newburyport High School administration has handled recent repeated incidents of hate speech and threats coming from some members of the student body. And I actually have, I've collected fifty signatures of students who feel unsafe in school because of the recent trend of hate-related incidents and they feel that administration hasn't demonstrated that they will protect students in the event that they are harassed or experience instances of hate speech. There is one incident that I wanted to bring attention to with permission from the student and I'm not going to name names, I'll stay vague, but essentially this student sat down for the pledge of allegiance in the morning and was called a slur as a result of it. There have been two separate instances of that, I'm going to focus on one of them. And after that, it was brought to the attention of administration through a letter from a third party. And pending the investigation, it's sort of, no one really knew what was happening. There wasn't much transparency regarding that. And recently, it has come to several people's attention that the investigation has concluded by talking to the student who called the other trans student a slur without ever actually talking to the harassed party or any of the witnesses. And that was concerning to a lot of people because that doesn't show other students that it, that their concerns are taken seriously. So I just wanted to make a couple of points that, sorry. Failing to hold students accountable for their actions and words sends several important messages to the rest of the student body who always do inevitably hear about these incidents, whether it's from the school or through hearing from other students. With failing to take action or hold students accountable leads students to feel as if it's okay to verbally assault others on the basis of identity because the school will not take action. And it leads students who are harassed to not report incidents because they feel as if the school will not do anything to protect them. Failing to recognize the recent incidents that we've had as related and part of an overall changing school climate makes students feel as if their concerns are not legitimate and perpetuates repeat offenses. There have been several repeated incidents and students generally feel as if the school is failing to recognize that or acknowledge it because these students are dealt with privately and separately. And we understand that the school must maintain privacy with regard to individual students. However, that doesn't prevent the school from reminding students publicly of their anti-discrimination policies as well as educating students on the difference between hate speech and political opinion following all of the recent incidents that have happened. Because there is an important difference between political argumentative opinion and hate speech, a slur has connotations of violence due to the history behind the word and the school has to acknowledge the power of words versus legitimate and dynamic political discussions or arguments. Slurs are not words that build dialogue or foster intellectual conversation. They build walls and tear down a less powerful adversary. So the school needs to hold a strict anti-slur policy and make sure that's communicated to students because right now, a lot of the recent incidents that have happened are sort of being dealt with privately and not, there's no transparent policy other than the one that's on the website, which is a bit vague. So if the school were to hold an assembly or some variation of that which reminds students that the school will not tolerate harassment and which clearly outlines their policy, that will legitimize concern and student fears and send a message to those who might harass others. And the concerned parties do understand that the school is building a team to conduct more work in diversity education. That's really important. However, advocacy has to go hand in hand with accountability. Otherwise, the students will feel as if they can just sort of ignore positive reinforcement if there's no accountability to go along with it. Ultimately, students do have rights to privacy, even the students who are being investigated, but transparency on what policy is and strict adherence to that policy sends an important message to students that administration is dedicated to providing a safe environment for students to express themselves in person and opinion. It is the job of administration to make students feel safe and if students do not perceive the school as a safe environment, it's their job to change something until we do. That's pretty much all I have to say on that. But I sort of printed out what seems like a really good and comprehensive guide on hate and bias in schools that Newburyport could probably learn a lot from.
Thank you.
Leave those there, as well as the signatures. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment at this time?
Yes.
I'm Margaret Cody and I live at Nine Butler Street in Newburyport. I'm a junior here at Newburyport High School and I'm representing the girls soccer team as a varsity captain, the co-op ski team, and the girls lacrosse team. I'm speaking on the subject of later school start times. I've been a ski racer since I was young and when I discovered Newburyport High School did not offer a ski team, my friend Kate and I set out to create one. After advertising a co-op ski team to local schools in an effort to try and recruit enough athletes, our team was finally awarded with JV status, something that the MIAA requires before establishing a varsity team. After two years of JV racing, we have proven that we can compete at a high level. In fact, our JV racers have consistently been at the top varsity competition in the state. This winter will be our first year as a varsity team and we are excited to finally be able to race for a state championship. We are here today to encourage you to support our ski team as this potential time change would effectively end our program. Even with school currently ending at 2:21, we struggle to arrive at the races on time and we often cut it close enough to be disqualified. If our school's end time is pushed back any further, we will need to either consistently be dismissed from school or not race at all. Unfortunately, not being able to race would dissolve the program entirely as Newburyport students make up more than half the team. I do not want this change to end my passion for athletics or to negatively impact my academics. Most sports games usually begin at 3:30 or 3:45 and even as is, our stretching and warm-up routine is often cut short. Moving the end time back would force athletes to be dismissed from school whenever their team has a game. Given the nature of our sports schedule, students would be getting dismissed from class nearly every day. I am also incredibly dedicated to my schoolwork as I think it is important to challenge myself in the classroom before college. Say this time change does pass and a student athlete wanted to take an AP class that was only offered in G block, they would need to be dismissed on every game day, at least eighteen games in a season, and still keep up in the classroom. This would not only put additional burden on the student but also on the teacher as they will never have a full class. Before making any quick decisions that alter our school day, I hope that we can understand the athletic and academic implications. I urge you to please consider keeping the school's start time the way it is and keeping Newburyport student athletes in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Any other public comments? Hearing none at this time. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is our consent agenda. Mr. Menon, do we have warrants?
We do have warrants. We have two warrants. I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate of fifty-one thousand, twenty-six dollars and sixty-six cents be approved and forwarded to the city auditorium for payment. There are no conflicts on that.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate of three hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and five cents be approved and forwarded to the city auditorium for payment. There are no conflicts on this.
Could I hear a second, please? Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I'd like you to now, please refer to the Newburyport School Committee Business Meeting Minutes of Monday, December 5th. Could I hear a motion?
I move approval of the minutes from Monday, December 5th.
Could I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Corrections, observations? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously as well. Our student rep isn't here tonight. We have two, so I don't know where each of them are and whose turn it is, but we're going to skip down now to number five on our agenda and I'm going to turn this over to the Assistant Superintendent.
Great. And I would like to invite Katie Mead and Caroline Bell and Nancy Earle to please come forward.
Reluctantly.
They're coming, it's just... This evening, we would like to recognize these two young ladies for their dedication to the Keller Park Learning Center initiative that they've been involved in. And I'm going to let Nancy talk a little bit about that and then I will tag her.
Good enough. So, the Learning Enrichment Center provides after-school academic support, enrichment, social, emotional support, as well as other programs for our low-income students. And so Caroline and Katie, or Katie and Caroline, we always refer to them as a team because that's the way they come to us. They started coming three years ago and I think you were just in eighth grade, right? And you were a freshman in high school, so they were among our youngest volunteers ever. They have demonstrated, and I know this is very uncomfortable for them, they are not students who look for attention or the limelight, so I'm here to do that for them. They started coming, they've been very dedicated to our programs. They, let's see, the first thing they did was, well, they've been working with us, a group of students regularly, and then they put together a reading course. But most recently, they decided that they wanted to replace our furniture, which is about fifteen years old and was used to begin with. So they started a letter-writing campaign and raised over four thousand dollars. So while they are not the type of students who look for attention, they're the kids that you go to when you need something done. And I just want to applaud their achievements.
Can I just, may I just ask, ladies, what makes you keep going back? This is a long tenure. It's wonderful.
Well, we've been involved for a while and like, I think we've both been, we've sort of adapted to the center and we really enjoy working with the kids and we wanted to help them get a better environment.
I'm definitely seeing the kids' progress and how they've changed over the years and so I just want to keep coming back.
Are you going to be teachers in your professional careers?
I don't know.
Well, this is a wonderful achievement and, you know, the whole Learning Center is something that we are very fortunate to have in our city and it's young ladies like you that will help us grow and stay the way we want to be. So, I thank you so much on behalf of the school committee.
And I would like to recognize you, both of you, for exemplifying the Clipper values that we're all striving for in the district. This year, we recently identified values that we all wanted to abide by, adults and students alike. And those values are out of respect and kindness and innovation and perseverance, which I understand you've had to do over the years here; responsibility and the ability to reflect on how all of these things are impacting the larger world around you and how you fit into that. And I am so proud to be here tonight to congratulate you and to say that we believe you truly exemplify that for the Newburyport Public School. And thank you so very much. Thank you. Thanks, girl.
Thank you.
That warms the heart. Next on our agenda is the part of the continuing, I'm sorry, part of the continuing discussion of later school start times. We have our athletic director here with us this evening as well as the high school principal who is joining us. Did, to begin, Mr. Hawkeizer, would you like to go give an update on this information? And we now have, we've narrowed our proposals down is what it is and we have costs attached to each of the options. So, and that happened between the last meeting and this meeting. So I would just like to update you. Mr. Gad from Lamson looked at all of the opportunities for busing our students and this is where we are now.
So we actually have, there are three options on the table right now. Number one is, it's not number one, so number six is the one Nick Decanter put forward last year which has the high school and the middle school starting at 8:30, Bresnahan starting at 7:40, and the Mullen starting at 7:30. Option number two is the one we worked out at the meeting last week which has the high school starting at 8:30, the middle school starting at 8:40, the Bresnahan starting at 7:45, and the Mullen starting at 7:35. The first option I talked about has an estimated cost of thirty-eight thousand dollars. The second one has an estimated cost of sixty-seven thousand dollars. The third option that's still on the table is moving all of the start times back a half an hour, which we were told wouldn't have a cost change. So take whatever start times we have now and just move it all back a half an hour. Forward, back into the day, however you want to look, yes. Later. Move it all later by half an hour. And Salter said that that doesn't seem to need any cost judgment. So those are the three.
Any of the committee members have a comment about the information we received back from Lamson before we begin athletics? Salter?
Back in another district again.
It's okay.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Mr. Menon, do you have anything to add?
Hat trick goes after bid, doesn't it? No, I don't. I appreciate this information. Again, it's another, it's more information for us to sort of look at this in a different way.
They don't think at this point the public had the information, so I just wanted to update you on the work that's been done since our last meeting. And we have invited our athletic director to come this evening along with Mr. Parent, the principal of the high school, to discuss from an athletic point of view what these start times impacts they may have. So I'm going to either turn it over to Kyle or Mike.
Okay, I'll take it over. This has been ongoing with the K-PAN League and I included our coaches when seeking information how this would impact the entire athletic program. So I'm just going to basically state facts of what, of how this would impact our current situation with our fields and our gyms and so forth. So I have packets here that everybody should have a package. You can follow along. I put our athletic vision up there mainly to talk about how our athletic program is an extension of the classroom and it's part of the educational experience and we don't want to lose the fact of that. Athletic participation last year was down a little bit. This year, it's already increased in the fall. We had sixty percent of our males participate on at least one athletic team and almost fifty percent of females, so a total of fifty-four percent. This year, with the addition of volleyball and a larger freshman class, the number should get over sixty percent. So there's quite a few total student athletes who would be impacted with a later start. Athletic success, just a couple of quick things from last year. The Athlete GPA, slightly higher than a non-athlete GPA. And some of our K-PAN League awards, MIAA awards, sectional championships and state championships. So our student athletes have been working hard both in the classroom and out of the classroom. Some general challenges that we may face, and I'm going to break it down by sport after this. Basically, the shortened time each day for athletic opportunities. Daylight for safe, productive athletic participation. Daylight for practices will be minimal, especially mid to late fall and early spring. Most teams need ninety to one hundred and twenty minutes of on-field practice. We only have one field with lights. So mid to late October when practices would start at four o'clock, and if we had a game here on this field with lights, there would be approximately nine teams without a facility to practice. Practices won't start until nine, until, sorry, four o'clock. Opposing schools will be impacted with later start times. The home school determines the event's start time. The common start time for K-PAN League schools currently is 3:45. And we struggle for some of our opponents to get there on time for that. We should be at the opposing site at least forty-five minutes for most of our sports prior to the start of the contest. Our athletes and coaches need to be physically and mentally prepared to start each event. Late arrival will create a disadvantage for our teams. Bus transportation doesn't always leave at the departure time, so leaving a five-minute later departure than we expect will cause more stress for our coaches and athletes. And again, both physically and mentally being prepared to start a game is crucial. A later departure time could put us into work traffic if it's after 3:30, four o'clock. That's something that we're not accustomed to. Usually, we're at the opposing sites prior to that traffic. So it could cause for longer commute time. Fall athletic challenges. We'll go sport by sport. We have approximately, well, last year we had three hundred and eighty-four fall athletes. The golf team would face daylight issues. There's sixteen athletes on that team. The program may not exist with a later start schedule. The matches begin at 3:30. Most golf courses have adult leagues that start in the early evening and have agreements with schools that teams must end by a certain time. So we would have trouble finding a course that would start a match at, say, 4:30 based on what they can bring in for income. We have three matches per week, so for golf to exist, we would need to be dismissed, both home and away matches, three times per week all season. Cross-country, that's a growing sport at the middle school as well. We have a hundred and thirty athletes. The program may not exist with this schedule. The meets begin at 3:45. Multiple teams participate in meets, so we would have very little flexibility with start times. It's important and it's required that the teams walk the course prior to the start of a meet to know where they're going. So that takes time. To be physically and mentally prepared for the start of the meet takes time. For us to get to a home cross-country meet at Maudsley takes time. Both home and away meets would be impacted. Darkness on trails for both practices and games, especially late in the season, would be a safety concern. Field hockey. We have three teams, fifty athletes. Large numbers at the middle school as well, so we expect, anticipate that to stay the same. Varsity and JV travel together. They play at the same field. Varsity plays first currently at 3:45. JV's play after at 5:15. We have to turn the lights on most times for the end of the JV game. If we start an hour later at 4:45, it wouldn't really impact schools that have lights, but there are some that do not have lights. So JV games would be in jeopardy of finishing with appropriate daylight unless the home team has lights. Practices will be limited due to field availability and daylight. We have two fields currently for five teams, including the middle school. including the middle school. So, and that one field out here, the stadium is shared by the two, two to six soccer teams as well. So, we'll be fighting for that field with lights. Boys soccer and girls soccer, both have three teams with large number of athletes. They travel together, usually play games at the same time at three forty-five. Sometimes they're back-to-back, usually at a field that may have lights. Completion of the JV game would be in jeopardy if a field did not have lights. Early dismissal would also be required for away games at facilities without lights. Conducting two, a full two-hour practice will also be difficult with darkness starting mid-season. We have two to three fields for six teams, three games per week. So, one of the major concerns would be limited availability to practice as well as completion of sub-varsity games. Volleyball is an indoor sport. We have two teams, forty athletes. Main, a concern could be availability of gym if shared with cheerleaders. There are two to three matches per week. Football, three teams, sixty-plus athletes. Varsity games are on Friday nights, should not be impacted. JV and freshman games will be in jeopardy if scheduled during midweek. Practices for football, it's a little bit different because of preparing, dressing in pads, walking down to NOC, to their facility. Practices are typically two and a half hours long. A later start will reduce the practice time and put our athletes and coaches in a competitive disadvantage. We have one practice field for three teams, plus the many youth teams that begin practice at five thirty. If we start our high school practice later than, than we do now, an hour later, say at four o'clock or four fifteen, that will jeopardize the youth access to our fields. And I'm going to talk more about youth at the end specifically, but the youth is our future, and the youth players now will be Clippers in four to five years. So it's important that they develop properly and have the facilities to do so. The biggest impact would be during the playoffs and leading up to the Thanksgiving game when it's darker a little bit earlier. If, if the stadium is not available to practice, our team will not be able to have a field to practice on that's not dark. So it's a crucial time of the year. Cheering, we have one team, twenty athletes. They will be competing with volleyball for gym time. Middle school sports at the NOC, cross-country, large team. This program probably would not exist with a later start time mainly due to daylight and traveling to NOC, to Maudsley for home practice and having that many young athletes on a trail with darkness. Meets would also start at three forty-five, home and away, and it would be difficult. Only an early dismissal would allow this to happen. NOC field hockey also has large numbers. Again, this program probably would not exist due to daylight. Practice fields will be limited. If the high school programs are moved back an hour, that's less time for field availability. And with five teams and two fields, somebody's going to be squeezed. Move on to winter. Hockey, right now, two teams, fifty athletes. Due to our location and dismissal time, current dismissal time, we're the only local team that uses the Graff Rink that has the ability to practice during, at the three o'clock slot. That slot allows us to stop practice at two fifty. That's ten minutes extra. When we only practice for sixty minutes, that ten minutes is, is huge. Also, the ice time is two hundred and thirty-five dollars per hour, so we're, we're getting an extra ten minutes at no cost. So that's, that's valuable time. With a later dismissal time, we will no longer be able to practice during that slot. We will be then forced to practice after the open skate and the youth programs at either eight o'clock or nine o'clock in the evening. That's when our youth team, our JV, opposing schools have varsity and JV practices. So now there will be less ice time, and it will be later at night. One of our teams or some groups will be, will have less practices. We're pretty fortunate to have that three o'clock slot whenever we want. And again, that, that's an advantage for us. If we lose practice time, that puts our coach and our players at a disadvantage. Boys and girls indoor track. We have no home meets here. All the meets are away. Some meets begin at four o'clock. They're all multi-team meets. We could not participate in the four o'clock meets. We could also not participate in the four o'clock JV meets every Friday at Ipswich High School for the whole K-PAN League. Practices are typically after school in the gym with the weight events and the jumps, and the runners are out on the roads. A later start will force our distance runners to finish their training on the streets in the winter in darkness. So, that would be a safety concern. Indoor practice may not be available due to basketball games, limited gym time due to basketball practices. Right now, they're in there for an hour, then basketball practices start at four, four to six, six to eight, and then youth come in after that. Boys basketball, we have three teams, forty athletes. Home freshman games currently begin at four o'clock. So, away games start at three thirty. If we had to bump games back, our varsity games probably would not end until nine thirty or so, and returning home to campus, ten thirty to eleven o'clock. So, that would, would have our athletes out later at night. And for home games, it would, it would cause spectators to come to our games later, which could have a adverse effect on our youth attending our home games. Practices will be impacted since we have two gyms and five teams, and there will be less gym time available. Girls basketball does not have a freshman team. Games should not be impacted, but they will lose that hour of gym time that has to be shared with five teams. Something that Margaret talked about earlier, cooperative teams. We're very fortunate to have this opportunity for our athletes to participate with other schools in four different sports that we do not offer here at Newburyport High School. And we have a number of athletes exposed to this. We have to go by their time requirements. And many of these sports occur immediately after school, especially the, the meets or the games. So our athletes may not be afforded this opportunity to participate if we have an hour, one hour later departure or dismissal time. Spring challenges. Our spring, our baseball team, they have, there's no time clock on that. So again, we're going to be fighting daylight. Varsity and JV travel together, start games at the same time. Daylight will be issues with games and practices. Sport doesn't have a time clock. Time, game time varies. Early April games may not be completed due to daylight. We didn't play any night games last year. Very few fields do have lights with baseball. Early dismissal would be necessary for all ten away games. Freshman games will be in jeopardy due to field, field availability, especially at home here with only two fields. One team would be required to start practice at six thirty, again with daylight issues. Softball is very similar. There is no freshman softball team. One thing unique with softball is we play at, at a youth facility, and part of our agreement is that we would be off that facility by six o'clock so that they could have their normal youth practice or instructional period. If we started games at four forty-five or later than three forty-five, that would jeopardize us getting off the field in time. If we moved our softball to an inferior facility, that could raise Title IX issues with comparable to baseball. So, that would be a concern right now. The facility we're on is superior to the, the alternative. Boys and girls tennis. These matches really push darkness each, each day anyway. Varsity and JV play on the same day. They typically last three-plus hours. JV matches follow the varsity matches. So if we, with an hour later start for the match, we, we would jeopardize the JV program. We would need to be dismissed for all home and away matches. We have three matches per week, and both of these sports would be in jeopardy of existing. Boys lacrosse and girls lacrosse, both large teams, a growing sport. Varsity, for boys, the games are played at the same time. So, early dismissal may be required for away games if opponents do not have lights, especially early in the season. Later practice times will impact youth practice availability. We have two to three games per week. Girls lacrosse is similar to field hockey where they play back-to-back mainly due to lack of officials. So they're forced to play back-to-back. And we did in early April, turn the lights on for JV girls lacrosse. So had we not had lights, we would not have been able to finish the girls lacrosse game, JV girls lacrosse game, which would be the case if we played at, at an away facility that did not have lights, which does occur. The only alternative would be to get dismissed early. Outdoor track, one hundred and ten-plus athletes. Again, these meets last three-plus hours, and we'd be fighting daylight. We can't dictate the start times, especially away, the multi-team meets. We need to be dismissed for all home and away meets. The final event is a long-distance race, which is actually a longer event, requires more time, and that does need to finish in daylight. So that would be an issue to get down to our track facility. We would, like, again, the alternative would be to get out early, earlier. Middle school track, large number of athletes. Program may be in jeopardy due to track meet times at opposing schools, assuming everybody is still at the current time schedule. All home and away meets would need to be early dismissal. Some other challenges, if we talk about youth sports, our youth sports are growing here in Newburyport, which is great to see. We have a lot of people who are volunteering. If you look out on the gym when you leave here tonight, there, you'll see people right up until nine o'clock, nine fifteen in our gym here, same at NOC, same at Breznerhand. They're, each sport would say they would like to have more time at the, at our facilities. Our high school teams would like to have more time at our facilities. Something with one less hour a day at every facility, every field, every gym, something would have to give. They're instrumental for the development of our future, Newburyport High School athletes. These youth programs will be dramatically impacted with the availability limitations, possibly reducing participants, possibly affecting our numbers in the future. Youth programs begin at the conclusion of our high school practices or games. Youth football, there are four to five teams. They currently start at five thirty. They would need to be pushed back to six thirty or so. So as you know, in the fall, that daylight would be an issue. Coach Levine has worked hard with the youth program to, to build that relationship, and we want to continue to build numbers for our football program. Youth soccer, they do have Cherry Hill, but their numbers are large, and they use Fuller Field as well in the fall. They currently start after our girls soccer practice between five and five thirty. So that would need to be pushed back to six or six thirty. Again, daylight would be a concern, and, and building a youth, you know, comprehensive, boys and girls youth soccer program would be compromised if we didn't have enough space or time. Youth soccer, three hundred and fifty athletes. Last year in youth soccer program, which is a very large number, and we expect that that will continue to grow. They use Fuller and NOC. There's very limited space for this growing sport. Moving practices back thirty to sixty minutes would affect their skill development. Youth cheering, practices in the evening in NOC. They could be impacted if we move our cheering or volleyball times in the gym, if we move them back. Youth basketball, we have boys and girls, large number that are fighting for gym time right now. They currently get into the high school at eight o'clock. They get into NOC at seven thirty, and into Breznerhand at six o'clock. And these are young youth players. It's really not ideal to have them out, you know, too late. And moving in, dismissal time an hour back will reduce their time. It will, it will basically take the high school right out of the equation. A, a new facility or a new gym would be helpful for our youth programs to have access. Youth baseball, again, it would be daylight, it would be availability after our high school practices. The second field this year, we, we really struggled last year with one field. This year, we're thankful to have the second field. And I know our coaches are eager to continue to build our youth foundation, and hopefully a field availability will help that. So, moving it back will limit, moving the school dismissal back will limit that availability. Youth hockey, I've already discussed. We may lose one slot at the Graff Rink due to us, our high school team taking a later slot. It could be part of our youth program that uses, that loses a practice time. Other challenges or concerns, coach teacher role. We have, Mr. Parent and I have strived to have our coaches and teachers be, work, be one. And we, we'd like to have our teaching staff also be on our coaching staff. And this could put teachers in a tough position if they hold dual roles. They have teaching duties after school. They have extra help duties after school. Possibility of getting out early could compromise what they're trying to do in the classroom, could disrupt their daily activities. Some days, students are getting out dismissed. Some days, teachers are getting dismissed early. At some point, they may make a decision, or may be forced to make a decision, to either coach or teach. Having a teacher who is on our coaching staff has many benefits. One is the visibility in the school day with our student athletes, and communication with myself and administration. I hope that's something that we never lose, having our coaches in our building and in our district, because as I mentioned in our mission statement, our, this is part, our athletic program is part of our educa- educational experience, and our teachers should play a part of that as well, as a coach. I mentioned extra help block after school briefly. Practices begin at three o'clock now to accommodate, to allow students to participate or to seek out extra help from teachers. If that happens, and we're forced to start at four o'clock to also, to allow this, this help block again, that will put teachers in a tough position to get out to practice, and it will also, you know, trying to fight the darkness. And it will put, it may put students in a tough position whether or not they want to go for extra help or get ready for practice. Early dismissal issues, I've already talked about a little bit. We, we avoid at every possible cost of getting dismissed early for an athletic event. Unless it's absolutely necessary, we do not get dismissed early. If we go to this model and cannot change the start times, or cannot control the start times at opposing schools, if getting dismissed early is an option, or the only option, we could be getting dismissed early every day. It won't be the same students. Maybe field hockey on Monday, maybe boys soccer on Tuesday, because we play every single day. Could be cross-country on Wednesday. And if that's the case, that could disrupt a T, one class every single day of that week. So it would, and, and that would jeopardize consistency, and frustration could occur with the teaching faculty. And it could put us in a tough position requesting these early dismissals, knowing that we're impacting and affecting the academic day. I've listed on here, as you can see, potential number of times that each sport could be dismissed early. So you, you'd have an understanding. I think it definitely would be the fall and the spring would have a bigger impact, mainly due to daylight and the number of athletes that we have. Another important issue that may go overlooked is coach as a father or a mother, and family time as well. Coaches give so much during the season, and a lot out of the season, but in the season... time away from their family, their commitment to their team and their program is often overlooked. If we moved start times of practice or end times of practice back one hour, an end time of practice that may have been five or five thirty may now turn into six or six thirty. I men- I'll mention this because two coaches have talked to me about this, this week, today. Um, that they would miss, could miss dinner with their young children. They could miss activities, family activities prior to bedtime. It's their choice to coach. They do it because they love it. But this may jeopardize, this may put them on the spot and make them choose between spending time with their family, being available for their family and being available for our athletes. I'd hate to see coaches have to make this difficult decision about the coaching profession. Coaching turnover may, it could increase. Freshman sports, if the varsity and JV start times are moved back one hour, the field and gym availability for freshman teams may be limited. Again, that's our feeder program, that's building for our future. Spectator attendance, I talked about it a little bit earlier, mainly in the winter. If we start an eight, a basketball game at eight o'clock here. If you come to a basketball game, you're gonna see a lot of youth players attending, participating at halftime. It, it really catches on as the season goes along. They bring their, their families with them. It's a, it's an excellent atmosphere. Our hope is that they dream about, see what's happening on the floor and they dream about playing out there someday. And they dream about playing on the soccer team by attending games and being a ball boy or ball girl. Part of their dream. If we have games that start at eight o'clock and go until nine thirty, we're gonna, we're gonna push some of those people away. And then we're not gonna, it's, it may not, the, the younger players may not be uh, able to attend. Lastly, the Cape Ann League. Every other school in the Cape Ann League will be negatively impacted when they play us due to the late ending time. That's home, that, that would be for our home games and away games. Schedule wise, this would be easier to implement if the majority of our league made this change together. So this, these are, are facts. Things may come up as we research more. Some solutions may be available to some of these challenges, but currently the, this is what we're faced with. If you look at the end of the packet, the athletic petition, uh, participation is broken down by sport. One sport athlete, two sport athlete, three sport athletes, total of ath- total athlete um, positions. And then sport start times. Our current start times, our current practice times. So I'm hoping that some questions that you may have could be answered. This is based on our current situation. As I said, I'm sure some, with brainstorming, solutions. We, we could find some solutions for some of these challenges, but some with the daylight and lack of field space. Unless, unless we have more daylight, lights, uh, or field availability, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure what our options are. Particularly for, for practices. Be happy to answer any questions or clarify anything.
There's no plan.
Kyle, I have a, a question. Currently, with the current athletic schedule the way it is, how many students are dismissed on average a week?
An away game?
Well, for anything. I mean, you know, away game, a practice. I guess I'm trying to figure out with the current schedule we have now. I, I hear about um, some early release. Um, can we talk about that a little?
Sure. I would say um, it's very rare. Maybe one, the fall. Each team maybe once or twice all season. Varsity teams only, or varsity JV, away games only.
Right, cause you said they travel together.
They would travel together. We wouldn't be dismissed for a home game. Freshmen would not be dismissed currently. It would be a situation where we couldn't get to a game and properly be ready to play. And it, it could be Lynn Field or, or a non-league game closer to Boston, um, but it's, it's rare. I would say one to two times for most teams, some teams none. Winter, we have, basketball will not be, either boys or girls will not be dismissed early at all. Hockey will be dismissed one time because the opposing rink has it scheduled for like a three thirty game, so we, we have no choice. And then the spring, baseball, softball could, lacrosse not so much, but baseball, softball, tennis. Tennis could uh, for an away match.
But do they now, currently with our current schedule? That's what I'm asking.
Very, not very often. Um, just the, a week and a half ago, we had two teams that were dismissed for, they weren't for games, but they were for scrimmages. And inevitably, that next day, I've got two emails from teachers going, what the heck's going on? I've got part of, you know, I got four or five athletes, student athletes missing from my G period class. It happens ve- very infrequently. I would say the sport that gets dismissed the most would probably be golf. Because they are on a real tight schedule as far as getting their match started before it can be completed uh, in daylight. And so I would, you know, historically in, in, in my career with, with sports, golf is, seemed to be the, the sport that gets dismissed the most often.
And, and they're always missing G block because we're not rotating our schedule?
We are no longer rotating our schedule, which I'm going to address when we talk about, you know, early dismissals and classes and what academic consequences may come up from a three twenty-one ending day.
So it, so it's rare now and the students are responsible for making up the work that they miss and, and Kyle, you're saying this would be exacerbated by a later start time?
Yes. I, I can give you the exact early dismissals from last year if you'd like, for comparison. I, I can send that to you. And our early dismissal now is usually just, is to beat the buses out of the parking lot.
Oh, okay. So I was gonna ask you.
Usually a two o'clock, uh, and I know it's still a valuable twenty minutes of class time. But it's between two and two ten so that we can roll before the buses.
Right, understood. Understood.
Otherwise, it's two forty.
Now, did you work in a district that changed start times before you came here?
No.
Oh.
They, they, no, s- s- there were surrounding districts that did. We did not change.
What was your experience of having, having some districts that had a later start time and some that didn't? What was the impact?
It did not start until I left. It's, it's, it happened as I left last year.
Mr. Colm?
This was up in Maine, right?
Correct.
And in Maine, it's, it's pretty well publicized that they've had very, a lot of difficulty in recruiting coaches for a lot of the interla- interdisciplinary sports. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And that's, right now, we're fortunate that we have some uh, experienced coaches here, correct?
When we have a vacant position, we have qualified, experienced coaches apply, which is something that I did not have in Maine.
Right. Let, let me just ask you a couple of things. Uh, this is going in a little different direction, but it relates to what you're saying about using the facilities and uh, fields uh, later at night. So is the cutoff nine fifteen across our facilities or, you mentioned a time, so I just, I didn't know if there was a cutoff time when practices stop.
Right now, there is no designated time. The, the building closes at ten o'clock. We are done in the gym at eight o'clock in the winter. We've gone as late as nine o'clock in the fall for practices under the lights. Which we may push that a little bit if we go to a later dismissal time.
Well, I would think that everything's gonna be extrapolated out a little later. And uh, and I know that you're pretty new in the job here and working with budgets. And with these new facilities and fields, this one very, very active, have you noticed any stress on the, the budget, so to speak, in terms of being paid for uh, facilities or custodial support?
This past fall, there has been a bigger strain due to custodial coverage. They have uh, contractually. Were required or expected to cover certain events. And the budget that we have currently does not support what's, what's happening right now with, with coverage, so we.
So fair to say with the uh, latest school start times, we might need to look at some more funds to keep, sustain the facilities, keep them good, uh, so on and so forth. Another question related to what you're saying about arrivals for games, uh, and I, you didn't say it, but I'm, I'm sure you, you know it. Isn't it helpful when a team arrives with enough time before game, allows them to get warmed up and also prevents injuries and things like that?
Yes. And, and I said it a few times, a minimum of forty-five minutes. Some sports require, require more time.
Right.
And their coaches say, I'd like to be there an hour earlier, some, some an hour and a half depending on the sport, but they, they need to be there.
Right.
It's not fair to our coaches and athletes to have them work and practice. And then on game day, the day they, they can compete, they show up and they're not physically or mentally set to go. And at the end of the first quarter or at halftime, they're losing one to nothing to a team that maybe they shouldn't be. And it's tough to recover.
Yeah. I just coming from a standpoint that if somebody comes out and not properly warmed up, they can get hurt real easy and that, that is bad for the student athlete and, and all the work that's been put in from everyone. Question from Mr. Parent regarding uh, these uh, early dismissals. Has, is there, is there options for uh, early dismissed students to like, get back some of their work or get extra help or ha- have you ever thought, and I'm, and I'm not saying you shouldn't be thinking about it, or have you ever thought similar to what colleges do to offer a block of support after school for kids who are participating, or student athletes who are participating in athletic programs?
We, we haven't gone there simply because of the fact that with the so few dismissals that we currently have, that's really has not been an issue. When I talk about the impact on academics, um, I'm gonna go back to my twenty year history at Keene High School where, where teams were dismissed on a daily basis because in the western, we were the only division one school in the western part of the state. And our closest competitors in our division were Concord, Manchester, Derry, New Hampshire. So we had a ninety minute bus ride to get to those events, so we were dismissed daily. I coached for seventeen of my twenty years at Keene High School and I was a classroom teacher for seventeen of those twenty years. And if I had a last period class, my, my class lost me as I got on the bus with my cross country or track teams because I had to go with my team early to get to the event on time to do the warmups and the walking the course for cross country, which to me requires a minimum of an hour and fifteen to an hour and a half time before, before you can actually be prepared to run a meet. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about that uh, on my portion. Uh, but no, I have not thought about that Steve, only because it really has not been a critical issue here. We do it so, so, so little now that, you know, i- if a student misses one class in, in, in a month, it's not, it's not an issue. But if you're missing classes twice a week or three times in two weeks, that becomes to me um, academically not, not a, not a good thing. And you're also, I'm looking at the classroom teacher who now has five, five cross country, you got a hundred and ten kids doing cross country. You got five kids leaving that G period class to go to an away cross country meet. You got twenty-one kids in that class, you're doing an activity. Now you've got sixteen because the kids are getting out at, let's say, let's say quarter past two, which is, or even two thirty. You, you're missing forty to fifty minutes of that last period. So that becomes, for me, becomes a, you know, an issue. And I, that's my part of the, of the presentation tonight. I served on this committee since the inception. I went to every um, meeting that was held last year. My sentiment has not changed one bit and I'll get to that in a few minutes.
I have no further questions at this point.
Mr. Hockhizer?
Kyle, can I ask you, so I know you weren't there, but how did southern Maine do it? Like how did that entire region change the start time and lights even scarcer up there than it is here?
I, I don't, I don't know. I, it, I was, I wasn't there.
So is there any chance, and I know Portsmouth just changed their start times. So in the near future, could we reach out to the athletic departments up there and see if, like see what's happening?
I, I will say that our school's time at Bonny Eagle High School while I was there, start time was seven thirty, dismissal time was one fifty-two. So if they moved it back a half hour, that's still, I, I think it's a, the, the shorter school day. I know Portsmouth just made that decision within the last week. And the article didn't say the dismissal time, it just talked about the um,
Cause I, I know like one of our things we talked about with the buses, that our s- Newburyport's end time ends later to accommodate, I believe for some of our late arrivals and half days and that.
It accounts for nine, the nine, nine ninety statute.
Right.
We extended the school day to account for the nine ninety.
I understand that. I guess I'm thinking, are there other ways to be creative? You're saying like the, the southern Maine start times just end earlier. There's just less school.
I can reach out to the athletic directors at those schools.
Thank you.
And also Portsmouth and Oyster River who just implemented it. Now they haven't gone through it yet. Maybe the schools in Maine have.
Okay. And I know Angela went to a meeting with the Cape Ann League. And originally, the athletic directors were all gonna be there, but didn't turn out that anyone, any of you went.
No, we, we were not. It was a, it was a superintendent level meeting.
Right. So originally, it was a superintendent athletic director meeting. I, I promise you, Mike, when it was scheduled to happen in May, it was originally scheduled in May, we were told it was athletic director superintendent meeting.
This May? Yeah, I went through it in previous.
And then, and then it was canceled and then it was turned into a, a superintendent meeting alone. So just, I'm letting you know how it was originally scheduled and then how it played out. So I'm wondering if the Cape Ann League athletic directors have had time to talk at all if we could consider moving en masse instead of just us.
We uh, we were never invited to the meeting um, on our end. And we are waiting for direction from the superintendents, how, how it may, we don't know how it will impact us. We don't know.
I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm promising you it's, it's not your issue, so I'm just gonna swallow that comment because it was clearly directed in the spring. We asked Superintendent Ficaro to have you at that meeting that we were told was for athletic directors. And so hopefully we can maybe get another meeting.
But can, can I just speak to that, Mr. Hockhizer?
Yeah.
I went to that meeting um, for Superintendent Ficaro. And when I got there, I think there had been some kind of miscommunication about that because no, there, nobody had anticipated athletic directors. You know, I, when I got there.
I didn't say it was a league-wide misinformation, but we were told.
I know, but it would have, it, it would have put um, Kyle in a very awkward position.
All, all I'm saying is that we were told by Superintendent Ficaro that we would be able to talk, that Kyle would be able to ha- talk to the other athletic directors at some point. And that was supposed to happen in the spring. It is now coming on January and it has not happened.
We meet monthly and this is discussed monthly.
I, I know, but I'm saying, but you're, you're saying you're asking for direction from the superintendent to do that. And I'm, I'm surprised that our superintendent has not directed that to happen yet. I, I have one more question then, and then Nick's looking at me puzzled, so I'll, I'll move on, but I, I guess I'm thinking like, I understand the impacts and, you know, I, I know that people at the beginning said that, and we, people have sent us emails asking us to consider this issue and to look at all sides of this issue. As you said, Mike, this. As you said, Mike, this has been talked about in the district for a year and a half, two years now, I believe. So we've been looking into a lot of these things. In addition to the fact that, you know, when we think about the medical agencies coming out, the pediatric agencies coming out, the psychological agencies coming out, the sleep studies coming out. You know, I understand we're talking about the impact of whether or not we win a game. We're also talking about the impact of health. I mean, Steve, you brought up the safety of students not stretching enough. You know, the American Pediatric Association says if we're not letting them sleep at the appropriate times, we're also impacting their health. So I don't think we should talk about this as a, as if the research doesn't exist. It's like a global warming conversation with the coal industry, like, we have to admit that everything's going on out there. And so I'm really not really sure, like, I don't at all intend to dismiss the impact on students and nor do I want them missing classes, especially if it's the same block every time. But we also have to think about this as what is possible instead of, you know, why are we not gonna consider other options? Or creative solutions, or what the next step forward could be.
Mr. Decanter.
Thank you, Mr. Decanter. Kyle, thank you for this report. It's very complete. And I applaud you also for presenting things in such a way that we can look at it as a fact. And your openness to find creative solutions for some of the issues presented here. All of those are important. There is significant scientific evidence that we have seen and we have taken great interest in about the reasons for starting school later. How that applies to Newburyport High School, we won't, is yet to be seen in terms of what kind of academic impact that may have. But there are a couple of realities that we're faced with. One is we're in New England, and we only have a certain amount of hours of daylight in each day. The second, which is in direct conflict with that, is that we are required by state statute to provide our children with nine-hundred-and-ninety hours of instruction. And so there's not much wiggle room as we begin to take a look at this, and this is where we need to be creative. And so I, again, want to thank you for your willingness to get creative with you. I think all of us here are frustrated by the fact that we seem to have things that are good for kids that are in conflict with each other, and which of the goods do we choose, or how do we go about that? It's not gonna be an easy process. So having the amount of information that you presented and I think in the tenor that it was presented is very helpful. I think you presented some things that I hadn't thought about yet, and so I appreciate that. And I look forward to being able to ask questions as I come up because the discussion will continue, I'm sure.
Thank you. Mr. Mannan?
Yeah, I also appreciate the amount of work that has gone into this and the clarity of information. It's always a sort of a point of frustration for me, and I comment on it every time because it's always a point of frustration for me, to get a ton of information while I'm sitting here and don't have an opportunity to review it beforehand so that I can ask questions that, you know, at least are insightful and thoughtful questions. So I always say that, and I always say that I reserve the opportunity in the future to ask questions based on the information. And I just had a couple of thoughts, a couple of questions. One, is there, do you have any sense that there's a critical mass of schools that need to make a choice to do this for it to happen? Because I know that there are other districts that are considering this. Mascanometer is pretty well along in their consideration of this. I know Georgetown as well is considering this. And I just wonder, is there a tipping point?
I think the Middlesex League did it correctly. The entire league changed. At the same time, they had a two-year plan. So the other thing you have to have, however, look at the Middlesex League, you gotta look at their facilities. You gotta go to Reading High School and see what they have for facilities. They can have three teams practicing under the lights because they've got three fields with lights. We don't have that right now, and believe me, I am ecstatic as to what we have for facilities now than what we had five years ago. It's dramatically improved. I'm not knocking what we have. However, I would think that either as a, minimally as a league or pie in the sky as a region of the North Shore, if we all made the move together, some of these problems would be moot because we'd be all in it together. It still may not take away some of the issues, like David said, there's, this is a webbed thing. There are overlapping and interlacing, you know, facts, situations, and occurrences that are gonna have to be worked out. It's not gonna be easy, but I think we have to be very, very careful in making a move and look at all of the possible aspects and the ramifications of it before we make a move and say, we're gonna solve it later. And just to be upfront, we made a big change in the high school schedule years ago. We studied it for two years. We made the move. It took us a while to adjust. We made another move, and we found that we were burying our kids with homework, getting ready for six periods a day. We listened to the students in the survey that we did, and we went to our current schedule with five classes a day to try to alleviate the homework overload that was working for them. So, you know, a change in a schedule for one school took two years to study and look at the impact of it and look at different models. So for me, a two-year study of a change of the entire district is not, it's not, you know, something like, oh, my God, it's taking, you know... This is a monumental change, and I think we have to look at all aspects of it before we get into something that we go back and say, well, jeez, I didn't realize that, or, oh, that can't be fixed. And I agree with you that, you know, people a lot smarter than me can get around the table and problem-solve things probably better than I can. But I'm looking at the reality of the situation right now and looking at what a one-hour change would do currently. I'm not saying that all of the problems can't be solved, but they're, you know, I'm a visual guy. I'm a visual learner. So I've gotta look at stuff and say, whoa, wait a minute, timeout. We gotta really take a look at this first and see what is going to be the real impact on, not on the adults, not on the families, but on the students. And that, to me, has gotta be our first priority. And I agree with David. I've read all that research. I've read, you know, the latest things that have come out of London about sleep patterns as opposed to the sleep time. I agree with you that, you know, for Mike Perron, a seven-thirty start or eight-thirty start's not gonna make any difference. But it is gonna make a lot of difference to a lot of other people inside this building. And I think we have to be very careful before we make that change.
I would, Mike, I agree with you a hundred percent about being careful, and I think that's why we've been treating this issue for close to a year and a half now. We've been discussing it. And in fact, actually, what has really been driving this issue for those of us on the school committee who are interested in the people in the community is the impact on students, literally. That's been the driver. So I don't wanna sort of minimize that. This is not, you know...
No, I'm not, I'm not here to minimize. I'm not here to, you know, I've been studying this now for a year and a half, and I still don't have answers to some of the questions that are out there.
I think we have to surface the questions, which we're doing, I think. I also tend to agree with David, and you've heard me say this a million times in all the years I've been here. I like to try to think of what is it gonna take to make something work as opposed to why it isn't gonna work. That doesn't minimize that we need to identify what the issues are so that we understand them and work with them. And I guess I finally have to say that it's very disheartening to me to hear that after investing millions of dollars in fields, we're still so far from having what we need in the community, which is sort of the message that just was really hammered home here. You know, again, we just don't have enough field times, we don't have enough lights on our fields, we don't have enough fields. And that's after investing considerable amount of money.
But again, I'm not knocking, because again, I've been here eleven years. And what we have today is light-years ahead of what we've ever had here in Newburyport. And we would have compounding problems more than what Kyle just, you know, outlined for you if we didn't have the upgrades to facilities that we currently have. It would be more, it would be in dire straits, you know, ten times over. So again, I'm not minimizing, this is, we are ecstatic as to our field and facility, what we have now compared to what we've had in the past.
Good, I'm covered for now. I mean, I think we have, you know, we've identified some districts, we've identified some things that we're gonna do here, communities that we're gonna reach out to to try to get a sense of how they're doing it. You know, it remains an open question to me, you know, how the conversation proceeds with other districts that are interested in doing this. We know that there are several that are already interested in doing this. How do we sort of broaden that conversation? But again, that's part of our due diligence, that's part of our challenge, I think, going forward.
Christine, did you have a question?
I do. I have a couple, I have just two really quick questions. One's for Mike and one is for Kyle. I had a couple of parents of athletes that contacted me in the last week that were asking about the possibility, if school start times were moved, of counting varsity sports towards credit. And I did a little looking around, and from what I can tell, because it's not officially structured time, that's not possible. And I just wanted to clarify that with you. Is that...
Yes.
So it's not something...
Not unless it's graded some way.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the other quick question I had for Kyle was, you know, in some of the younger grades, and my kids have participated, you know, because of research, like the start-school later research, there's been research showing that before school, physical activity will increase test scores and attention in school. So we have the box program that runs, like the Brezenhan and the NOC, or the Mullen. My kids have participated in that before, for an hour before school. Is moving some of these practices before school something that you would consider? Or, I know it sounds counterintuitive to the whole start-school later thing, but I don't, I'd have to look more at the medical research in terms of, does that counteract the...
I think that's definitely, I don't wanna speak for Kyle, but that's definitely a possibility. I'm gonna talk about that when I get to flex because that's also, you know, a positive for starting later in the day. You could move some of the flex classes we do at night to the morning. But like you said, what's the break point on that, counterintuitively concerning a later start? But there would be options that we don't currently have with a later start as far as doing stuff in the morning that we don't currently do. Although I've got guys lifting weights in the morning at six AM, you know, through the spring and through the fall. They come here, and they're not forced to, this is what they choose to do. So, I mean, you know, this building doesn't sleep. It's open at six AM and it closes at ten PM. And it's a building that never sleeps.
Thanks.
So coaches, when I spoke to them about this, almost every single one said, well, the morning could be an option. And then they said that that would be counterproductive from what we're trying to do. But we would be creative, and if we had the support from the school committee and that was available, I think that we would see practices in the morning. What would happen or would impact that is if we have a night game the night before, and now that's gonna be later, especially in the winter, if we get home at eleven o'clock, the next morning wouldn't be available. But there could be one or two times a week when maybe it could. We would, whatever decision is made, we're gonna look at all possible options to make it work.
Thank you. Kyle, can you stay till Mike talks about his impact? And then maybe we go back to you, or is that, is that okay?
I'd be happy to stay.
Thank you.
So with the idea of early dismissals, I was at a meeting, a previous school committee meeting, when someone made a comment, well, when I was in high school, we got out early. I don't see what the big deal is, and, you know, I've been doing this a long time. I've been in education for over thirty-five years. And that statement was true twenty, thirty years ago. But again, I have lived the early dismissal for sports lifestyle for nearly twenty years in New Hampshire before I came to Massachusetts. And, you know, we didn't have the AP classes we have now. We didn't have high stakes MCAS, Park, MCAS two-point-oh, whatever you wanna call it, graduation testing that is required of our students to get a high school diploma. So what I wanted to do is just visually take a look at, okay, so if we were to start this tomorrow, or we started this in September, what impact would this have currently on our current schedule? Keeping in mind that this is really, I can't project what the schedule's going to be next year because students at Newburyport High School dictate the schedule by signing up for the classes and the courses that they wanna take. Once all that information is gathered, we then run through X-two, a master schedule. But currently, our F and G classes are the two periods that meet at the end of the day. And if you could turn to page three of this handout, you'll see that the top schedule is our current schedule for this school year. And period five is either G, five of the seven days in the seven-day cycle, or F, two of the seven days in the seven-day cycle. Okay, so those would be the, that would be the period under our current schedule that would get impacted. And down below is if we went with an eight-thirty start, what our schedule would look like with a later start. And as you can see, two-oh-eight to three-twenty-one would be period five, keeping the same rotation that we've had for the last two years. F and G would be the two periods that would have the most impact for any early releases, early dismissals. So I went to F period and G period for right now. And I outlined for you, outside of AP classes, the classes that we currently have offered for F period and for G period. And there's everything from English to physics to chemistry to nutrition to animation to art to Spanish to German. And those are the classes that are offered. The one sticking point that I have with early dismissals really centers around, even though I think it impacts every course and every grade at every level, is my AP curriculum. We are at a disadvantage where we live in New England with AP classes because we start school September, southern schools start in August. They get an extra three or four weeks of prep before that AP test because the entire nation takes them the first two weeks of May. So my teachers who are teaching AP US history or AP biology or AP physics are behind the eight ball before they start because they're trying to cram a curriculum in with about a three to four weeks really of less time of instruction. If we were to early dismiss student athletes, if you can look down at the middle of the front page, you can see by period currently what AP classes are scheduled at Newburyport High School. And there are multiple ones except for A period and C period. So F and G has Calc BC, Environmental, English eleven, English twelve, Stats, AP Bio, AP US, and AP Art. Those would be the AP classes impacted. Those would be the AP classes impacted. If we went to a late start and for me to avoid early dismissals for AP students, I would be forced to take those classes that are currently in F and G and put them in A, B, C, and D. So that would mean that we would have many more classes per period of AP classes and potentially, we would have more conflicts. In other words, students would have to make decisions, possibly, as to what AP class they wanna take because they may be offered in the same period because we're cutting out fifteen or thirty percent of the possible periods those AP classes could be scheduled. We have three hundred and fifty-six seats in AP classes currently. We have a hundred and ninety-one students who take one or more AP class at Newburyport High School. That's twenty-four percent of the student body. We have eighty-nine students taking one AP, sixty-one taking two, twenty-five taking three, ten taking four, five good souls taking five, and five students taking a AP class in virtual high school. Okay? Those students that are taking five APs currently, more than likely would not be able to take the five APs if I had to move APs to the first four periods or first five periods instead of using all seven. That may also go for the students taking four. What's the impact on that? Well, the impact on that is, you know, a student that can handle a five AP class load is going up against the student from Lexington who's taking five or six AP classes because they offer many more than nineteen sections and different subjects that we don't currently offer. This is the issue with early dismissal that we need to put on the table and we need to look at because this is going to have. We have done, I think, a magnificent job over the last three or four years, expanding student opportunities. We've added more AP subjects, we've added more AP sections, and we have increased our AP students' seats by over a hundred over the last four years. We've been an AP school of distinction for the last two years for increased student participation and AP scores way above the state and national average. We have offered sports that we can't currently run singularly here at Newburyport High School in cooperative programs with other schools. We started because we looked at our male and female student athlete participation rates and students told us that they need, they wanted a volleyball program, we started one this year. That didn't come from Kyle Hosden and Mike Parent, it came from the students that came to us and said, we can, we can get enough girls on that team to have a varsity. Well, they went out and got not only a varsity program, but they got a JV program. And that came from them. And I, the 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 thing I do not want to do, thing I do not want to happen here is that we start limiting student choices for either classes, AP classes, or for our flex classes. There are other constraints that we have to deal with on the top of page two. We look at individual teacher schedules. The last thing that we wanna do is schedule a teacher with five straight periods, any one of the seven days. And we do that. We do that through Judy Webster, who is magnificent at utilizing X two to put rules in so that our teachers aren't teaching five classes in a row without a break. If we compress our AP classes to six periods, some of our current AP teachers may not be able to teach the AP courses that they're currently teaching. And we'd have to prepare other staff to be AP trained to take over those sections. I have one of the best math teachers that I have ever worked with in my entire career. And his day is teaching five AP classes. He would not be able to do that if we compressed APs. I don't know what the effect of compressing AP classes would have on the honor sections and where those may fall. And you also may be forcing kids, if I'm putting APs in a smaller slot, a student may down the road have to choose between AP bio and anatomy and physiology in their senior year. That is a possibility, it may or may not happen. But when we start limiting the choices that students have for classes by periods, you are lessening the percentage of kids that can take what they signed up for. It limits the entire schedule. Flex classes, we have a hundred and ninety-plus students taking flex classes semesters one and two. We added fifty more kids this year by offering astronomy at night. It's been an overwhelming success. We had to turn kids away because Mr. We could only let Mr. McCarthy free from his day duties to teach two sections in flex. We could have actually run three sections of astronomy at night. That's how high the numbers were of students signing up for that class. One of the positives of going to a later start is we could move some of those flex classes to the morning. That may not be a bad idea, that may be a way of thinking differently than we currently am or with flex classes at night by having some of those classes in the morning. Right now, my teachers who teach the night classes don't teach the first period of the day because they're out so late till nine o'clock, they don't come in until eight-thirty rather than seven-thirty. So I don't know what they would feel about teaching a morning, a a morning flex class. I don't, I, we we have to have a conversation with them. Do I move my flex classes from six to nine to seven to ten? To try to keep kids like Jake, who sat in his chair a couple of weeks ago, who's doing the sport and also doing theater in a flex class, being able to do both? Or again, are we looking at limiting student choices? I already have two flex class proposals for next year. One is to teach a section of anatomy and physiology full year at night. And we're looking to add some interdisciplinary classes next year, the good work that we've done with the strategic plan so far this year has benefited us in that we have had teachers come to us with proposals of combining and team teaching some classes. We're looking at during the day, adding an engineering course. And at, in the evening, we're looking at anatomy and physiology. And the reason that teacher wants to teach A and P at at night is because if we add more sections of science, we won't have enough science classrooms during the day. And by teaching at A and P at night, it frees up a period if we're gonna add more science classes next year. And then the wellness and science department got together and are creating with a grant that was just approved, what, in the last forty-eight hours, Angela?
Mm-hmm.
The science of lifelong sports and outdoor activities. And that's gonna be next year offered as a flex course here at Newburyport High School. We spent time after we went from a block schedule to waterfall rotating schedule. We had the rotating schedule for a number of years, students were telling us they were just getting beat up with homework, having to prepare for six classes a day. We went to a five-class-per-day, stable schedule for the reasons that you see I have outlined for you in the in this in this year. They would prep for five and not six. Students have told us in surveys that they now have less, those that were in the old schedule now are in the new because not everybody at Newburyport, you know, were, lived both. But those that did, that they have less homework now and it's more manageable for them, stress levels have reduced. Our current non-rotating schedule allows for more students to take internships, our internship numbers have gone up now. On a positive note, if we start at eight-thirty, we might be able to get more students to take an internship A period. Because right now there are businesses may not open at seven-thirty. So that that may be a positive going to an eight-thirty start for our internships, flipping kids from a G period to an A period. That would have to be looked at, but I I I see that as as a as a good possibility. We started our lunches later with the new schedule and that's why when you see the schedule that what it would look like next year, I tried to keep the lunches relatively the same during the school day. And with our current schedule, keeping it stable, for our part-time staff, it's easier to hire a part-time staff person by telling them, you've got morning classes or you have afternoon classes instead of, one day you teach at seven-thirty, the next day it's eight-thirty, the next day it's nine-thirty, and at the end of the week it's one-thirty. That part-time teacher has to keep their entire day open in order to teach. We were finding it extremely difficult to find qualified teachers. And Angela knows this from firsthand, working with me diligently, beating the bushes, trying to find teachers with that rotating schedule who were who were part-time. Going to a stable schedule, we have had no problems filling those positions with qualified, certified staff.
Brutal.
Okay? And in the old schedule, students had seven different lunches. The angst of our students having to deal with a different sos- a socio group every lunch period, they told us they didn't like that. We went to a schedule where we had only two lunch options for kids. And that quelled some of that angst for our students, as opposed to seven lunches in the old schedule. What I'm getting at it here is, we do not want to go back to that rotating schedule. Even though it might benefit the early release time, not having the same period get hit day in and day out. We'd be taking a step backwards. And finally, on the last page, you do see our current daily schedule at the top. And if we were to go to eight-thirty start, keeping everything similar, we would have, third period would be our lunch instead of fourth period. And that would mean the the awful sacrifice of having two periods after lunch, which was the other detrimental thing that we had going with the rotating schedule. We had six periods a day and two periods after lunch. When we have only one period after lunch, it, everything just operated a little bit smoother for everybody. So I put the lunches in the third period. You could put, still put lunches in the fourth period, but they would be rather late in the day. And if you know teenage eating habits, that would create some, 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 um, concerns on my part for our students pushing lunch out that late, but it could be done. I took the liberty of putting the lunch in for a projected draft for a daily schedule next year in period three. And they would have three periods of lunches, C period, uh, twice in the seven days, D period, four times, and then that one E period on day six would be their lunch periods. So really, from from two options to three is is still a lot better than seven under the old schedule. So I wanted to do this visually because I I I think we really, really need to take a breath and really take a look at this because the last thing I wanna do is impact student learning and the academics that I think are really, really at a high level here at Newburyport High School. I don't think there is a, there is been a correlation between our move to nine-ninety, eight years ago, and the current successes that we see our students having in MCAS, AP, and everything else that our students are doing academically. I don't think it's a mistake. We went to nine-ninety for a reason, our students were losing over four years, a half year of instruction. And they got that half year back by us extending the school day twenty minutes. And and I don't wanna lose that because I think it benefits our students in the long run.
Thank you, Mike, any questions from the committee?
Just asked a couple.
Sure.
I I wanna first thank you for the block scheduling, I'm a huge fan of block scheduling, I know what a big effort it is to do that. I also wanna thank you for proactively coming, I I know, I didn't know we were getting this part of the presentation tonight as well, so I thank you for proactively putting that together because it's a piece of the puzzle that's uh, becoming too piecemeal to us. I guess just a couple of things I wanna throw out there, one is, I mean, you bring up the teenage eating habits, which sort of falls into the same block as the teenage sleeping habits. I bet you if you moved lunch late, kids would eat late even if they'd be hungry. In the same sense that we have school too early now, they're waking up even though it's not good for them. So in that mindset, like, like I I know you see it. You mentioned a couple of times the students taking five AP classes. I'm reading the book Beyond Measure, I don't know, you guys showed the movie as administration. I I guess I just have to think that the idea of moving the start times later isn't that same vein? That it's not necessarily a healthy thing to base a school's success rate on the amount of AP classes. I'm much happier to hear about the nighttime astronomy classes than I am the numbers going up in AP, especially kids taking five at a time. Having been in high schools most of my career, that's a hot mess for almost all the kids I've ever met. And I know there are always gonna be a few who can take it, but.
There's a few that can do it.
But it's still not a recommended. I I watched my brother do it, I tried to do it a couple of times, it's still not recommended. And I guess finally, I shouldn't even say, if I, nine-ninety, isn't that a state mandate? Okay, so we moved because we had to.
Correct.
Okay, just clarifying that. But, you know, we've been looking into this for a long time, and I say we, I mean the district, including you and the the committee here. Um, it was brought to us beforehand that the faculty believes that we should be getting more input from more stakeholders. And that, I guess we're at a point now where we don't know how much more input we could ask for or how much longer we can continue to look into this. I was a little dismayed to hear that the faculty never got the results from the survey. So I'm not sure why we haven't been sharing all those results, but we surveyed the students, we surveyed the community, we surveyed the faculty. I don't know why people wouldn't know those results or why that wouldn't be a discussion. And I guess the big question is, if we've been doing all of the work that over the past week people have been saying we haven't been doing, which is our due diligence, which is our research, which is our looking into all sides of it, which is reaching out to community members, like, how do we get that on board? Because it seems to me that we can't do much more outreach than we've been doing. We had twelve hundred community members answer the survey, I think we had almost every faculty member answer their survey. Everybody was invited to the meetings, everyone's been invited to the meetings, I don't know how much more we can do about this. As a committee, we've been begging for a timeline and for this sort of discussion to happen since the spring. So what do you see, or Kyle, either one of you, what do you see as a next step that we could take to make people feel as if they've been included in the discussions? Because it's not really that we need to do more discussion, we need to do more research. We need to get more people to the table when the research is being done. Because it feels like we're gonna need, you keep saying two years, we did this for two years. It feels like we're gonna need to do this for another two years. Asking people to actually come to the meetings or read the minutes or respond to the letters or whatever. Or in this case, get the administration to share the surveys with the faculty who took the surveys. Like, how do we, how do we move forward at all?
I think, I think you you've answered part of your own question, I think, number one, getting these, um, information out to the stakeholders, number one.
Okay, but but so I'm saying, that's not my, it's not my, so how do you do that from inside the schools?
I'm not saying it's yours, I I have never seen the survey results for the staff and I have not seen the community, um, uh, survey results, I've seen the student survey results. I have not seen the other two. I think, I think you have to, I think we have to bring a lot of stakeholders to the table that have not yet, either through their own volition, and I agree with you, this has been, I, you know, when I, when I saw this thing a a year ago, last fall. last fall, come out, I said, you know what? I don't want to go to another meeting. I, I, I got enough to do, but you know what? This is going to impact my building probably more than any other building in the district. I'm going to be there from ground zero and I want to listen and I want to learn and, and I, and I, and I, I want to problem solve. But I, I think we need to bring as many stakeholders to the table as we can, representatives of the stakeholders. I still think, you know, thinking big picture, there are contractual issues that probably need to be addressed. I think we need to get those stakeholders to the table. I think we can start doing that in a matter of, of a month. And, and really rolling up our sleeves and, and looking at this. And, and, you know, for me, I, I've said this and I'll say it again, I, I, I looked at the research and I, I, I'm not qualified to, to, to look at that research and go, it, it doesn't mean anything. Though, these are learned people who have studied this over, over a, a number of years, okay? And, and what I read, I mean, is what I've seen with some students coming into a high school at seven thirty AM who aren't clicking until nine o'clock. I, I've seen that from some students. But I, I, I think bringing all the stakeholders together and really looking at this and, to me, it's, it's reaching out to the other schools in the area and seeing if we can get momentum going to do this en masse. And that's where I think, uh, however the Middlesex League did it, they did it right. Because they all did it in unison. And to me, that would take a lot of what we've just talked about, not everything, but a lot of what we've just talked about off the table, if we all did it together. Because we wouldn't be worrying about going to Penn Tucket because they get out at two ten and we get out at three twenty-one if they get out at three ten. We, that would solve many of these, you know, issues that really are, are, are more, are time sensitive that I think could be resolved. I don't know, I, I went to, I went to one, um, I went to the initial meeting for Susan. She had a conflict with another, so she asked me to attend. And, and there was a spirited conversation amongst, I think, every school but one Cal school was represented in the meeting I went to. I spoke about the work that we had done. The Masco superintendent spoke about the work that they had done. They seemed to be a, a little ahead of the curve than we were at the, at, at, at that time. I think they might be still a little bit ahead of us. And Georgetown was the only other school in the district that was even looking at it at that time. Now, I don't know what has transpired in the other districts since then, if any of the other districts have, have even bothered to look at this. So, you know, I, 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 I just don't like being the Lone Ranger or the, or, or the rogue school doing this and seeing that we have to, to deal with so many other issues specifically, specifically for our students. And possibly, and I say possibly because what I showed you is, is the current schedule for Newburyport High School. That's not going to be what it is next year. There may be, only be one AP G period next year. I don't know. The students dictate the schedule. We have to put our rules and regulations in and we have to abide by contractual things for, for teachers and a number of preps and everything else, and we do our due diligence to do that. That's why it takes like four months to put a schedule together. But, you know, it could be flipped. It could be only biology G period next year and, and all of these other classes are A period. And it, it isn't such a big issue next year. But currently it is, and I can't predict what it's going to be next year until probably April or May, if, if we get our budget solved in time. Intent?
If.
We won't be doing scheduling over the summer like we were this past summer. So, you know, I mean, it, it, it all interlocks and goes together. But I, I just think, you know, there are much smarter people in this building than Mike Parent. And I'd like to get some of those people looking at this and, and problem solving some of these things. And working with Kyle and our coaches and our teachers and, 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 and looking at this in a comprehensive way and setting a, a very strict timeline of this is, this is what we need as far as a timeline. And that, that would be for you to set. That's just my opinion.
Thank you. Angela?
I just want to add to that, and I think it's become more and more evident as we've looked at some of the transportation, um, situation surrounding this that this impacts, it, it impacts the entire district. It goes way beyond just the high school. So all the things that my parent just said about the high school, I think, um, really those same conversations have to happen in all of our schools. Because every, everybody, all of the families in town will be impacted and all of the staff in all of our schools will be impacted by this as well. So, um, I just wanted to add that, you know, as we, as it feels like it's been going on for a long time, I think as, um, the high school staff stated in their summary of how they'd like to see it move forward, is that all of the constituents have not been a part of the conversation right along. You know, it's really been a very small group of people who have been a part of the conversation. And those who have been a part of it feel like it's been happening for a long time. But the impact is going to be so far-reaching that it does need to be much more inclusive.
And, and I, and I understand the frustration. We looked at changing the schedule eight or nine years ago and it, it was two years of study and I'm going to myself, well, it's a pretty simple solution. We need to get to nine ninety. This is the way we do it, but we had to let the, the process play out. And I think if, if you, if you do that with due diligence and, 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 um, I think you're going to get better buy-in by, by, by everyone to the process. That's, again, that's Mike Parent's opinion, being in this community for, for eleven years. And maybe I'm off-base, but that's, that's what I'm feeling.
Christine?
Sorry, I have, um, I just, I'm kind of curious about your opinion on something because one thing we haven't really talked about is, you know, if, and I don't think we need to have decided that this change will or won't happen, but talking about what kind of endpoints we'd be looking at to determine whether this is, the change is successful if it is implemented. I feel like we'd have to put those in place pretty early. So, um, you know, so that if we implemented it in the fall or two falls from now and another school wanted to know if it was working for us, we'd have some pretty solid information for them about whether it was working. Um, I mean, are there any things that you've been thinking about? I mean, I'm looking at this schedule right now and I'm thinking, is there a way to, to find out right now whether the first period of every day has a lower than average GPA compared to the others? And can we look at that later if the start times are changed? We'll find out if it's improved. Uh, would we just look at test scores?
That would be a difficult assignment. To look at our A period GPA compared to, I mean, if you found the same subject, e- e- every cohort's different.
Yeah.
You know, and you, you can't just say it's a late start phenomenon. Um, you know, I, I've had, you know, I, I taught one honors class my entire teaching career and I, I begged my department head never to let me teach an honors class again. Because the students were only, in, in the class that I was in, were only interested in the grade and I was more interested in students really enjoying the subject and learning. And, but I had, I had classes, CP classes where, you know, every kid was an AB student. I had, I had CP classes where kids were, a good grade for them was a C. And so it would be very difficult to differentiate that information in my view. I, I would go to some of my, uh, stat teachers in the building to see if that's even possible and would that have any validity, um, uh, to, to looking at that?
Yeah, I guess I'd just be, I'd be interested in a list of what you think would be good endpoints to look at. Trying to get a baseline of those ahead of any kind of change.
And Mike, what is our current rate of tardiness?
Oh, let's see.
That's easier to figure out than what Christine wanted.
Rate of tardiness on average, I would say, just, I just looked at, at the last two days, we had about forty students out of eight hundred, so what's that, five percent?
Is that what is usual?
That's, that's usual.
Does it fluctuate based on the season?
Um, it's a, I, probably a little higher in the winter with the parking. If we have snowbanks and, and walking to school.
And rolling over in bed and?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, but I, I would say we average maybe four to five percent a day. We average four to five percent on a two-hour delay.
They're still late.
That could, that could be because weather-related. I mean, you know, people are shoveling, people are trying to get to school. If you've ever been outside the high school at seven thirty, uh, you know that the, the, the mess the traffic is. So a lot of kids are not late because they're late, they're late because their parents are late getting them to school. So, you know, it's, it, it's a, I, I would say four to five percent is probably the average per day. And that, that might fluctuate on some days for weather-related issues. I mean, there are days when I look outside and the traffic's backed up all the way on both sides on, on, on High Street and I just say to everybody, we're not taking attendance for ten minutes. Let everybody in. Because it's, the, the kids, the parents are in a, in a parking jam and the kids can't walk up the hill because it's sheer ice. And so we've done that twice already this year. So, you know, we try to be as accommodating as, as, as possible.
Mr. Hawke?
I promise this will be my last comment. I feel awful for the girls waiting to talk about school rankings tonight.
We shouldn't have done the agenda this way.
Mike, uh, I'm gonna say you did hit on one thing that we had talked about last year that this really, uh, unfortunately after the committee meeting started, this was put into the hands of community members who very adeptly, with their capacity, did the research, got information out, came to meetings, that sort of thing. The reality though is this has to be in a school-led initiative. The research, the work, and so from, from the get-go, we'll call it phase two maybe, i- it really needs to be something. And Susan's not here, so we can't kind of talk to her about this tonight, but we're going to have to decide. I know the school committee has taken this up as an initiative to look into it. There's only so much looking into we can do without being in charge of your faculty meetings, which we can't do. So I think we will have to have a discussion with Susan that somehow to find out whether or not and where this is going to go.
And please, no matter what was said here by Kyle or I, this doesn't mean to provide any, uh, disservice to the individuals who've done a monumental amount of work providing us with a lot of very coherent and cognizant information for us to digest as professionals. But I just think if you really want buy-in, and, and I think what you just said is, is probably the best thing I've heard tonight, phase two. And I don't know what that looks like. That's not my job to decide. But I'm willing to roll up my sleeves and, and, and work with whoever wants to work on this and get a, a cross group of, of, of stakeholders to the table and, look at the nuts and bolts and roll up our sleeves and problem solve. And that's what, that's what this is about. It's, it's problem-solving. Like everything else that we do.
I appreciate that, Mike. I, I, I do. And I think, um, although we've lived this for almost two years, I don't know how much the community has been involved yet. The, the, the outer, you know, the periphery of the community. When we first started this, we talked about not impacting the elementary schools. And now we find due to, to monetary, uh, considerations, we have to move everyone. So I, I, I think the more information we get, the, the more we understand that, that, that the, the issue is an all-consuming one. And I for one, don't want to rush this. Y- y- you know, when you make a joke or you say something takes two, two years to get finished, but, I, I also like the, uh, phase two part because I think we're walking down a road and, um, we need to know where that road's going to carry us. So I appreciate both of you gentlemen spending this evening, um, with us. And, uh, please, if there's anything else you'd like to forward to us, um, at any time, please do that because we're always looking for the information that's going to make the best decision. But I don't know who said it this evening. I think several people did. We need to do what's best for the students. And, and what that is right now is, is conflicting. It, it, it is, but, um, I appreciate your willingness to keep working on this. I, I do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you.
I'm going to stay with the next.
Well, I'm going to apologize to all of them. We should have ordered this agenda differently and I'm really sorry. So if, if you guys, um, so Mr. Parent, if any of them, uh, call, have to be tardy tomorrow?
Yeah, they're, they're good. Yeah, just come and see me.
Would you just make a?
How are you?
Glad to see you back. We invited you back and you came back.
So I just saw my Google Doc.
Hi, Maria. How are you?
This has changed this. This is my only problem. I was going to let you just log in, but I was trying to get my adapter.
This is just a printout of the PowerPoint. You can follow along.
Thank you. I should probably get out of the way, right? You've done a lot of work in between, haven't you?
Seavey, you okay?
Yeah.
Yes, and thank you.
Did you get hit?
I'm all right. I got a big, uh,
But that's why you were late, so I just went with the dough.
Katerina, Katerina Conner.
Well, it never happens at a good time.
It's just on the Google Doc. So, and that's web-based, so they'd be able to.
Something.
Yes, thank you very much.
Sorry about that. I said goodbye.
Thank you, Kyle. And ladies, I'm really sorry about our extended conversations and I'm sure you got a lot out of it though.
Uh, so while we're setting up, we'll just introduce ourselves.
Great.
We're all four seniors here at NHST and we previously come and, uh, during the public comments, brought up our issues and feelings surrounding classroom. Uh, I'm Katerina Conner.
I'm Liz Fordier.
I'm Olivia Blackman.
That's for example.
She's the techy. She doesn't.
So we, uh, created a survey with the help of Mr. Abrams who teaches AP Language and Composition to juniors. And, um, last week, the survey was administered to all students during their, uh, lit, lit classes. And, um, every survey had the same information script at the top and all the teachers were directed to tell the students to just, um, read the instructions.
It was all presented in a non-biased way with nothing mentioned about class rank being eliminated. And six hundred and twelve kids responded, so that's a pretty good majority of our school, with about eight hundred. Yeah, so, Mr. Abrams, this is to like prove validity of our survey. This is the prompt that every student received at the beginning, um, just saying, um, that questions, how long it will take, um, the current policy on classroom, as well as how it's going to be discussed at the committee here. As well as how it's gonna be discussed at the committee here and the community at large. Um. And also be, wanna be presented to the Newburyport High School faculty during January staff meetings.
Um, so these are the survey questions, which we're gonna go over the data in a minute. So, we asked your role in the school community, so your grade, um, what grades you mostly receive. If, um, keeping class rank is important to you, how many students should be ranked, um, if you know your class rank? And who should speak at graduation?
As well as.
As well as if you plan or currently take any AP classes. Um, why do you take AP classes? Do you agree with the policy of class rank that's currently, um, at NHS? Does class rank create stress for you? And how important is keeping class rank?
So, these are results from the entire school, so almost six hundred and twelve respondents. Um, and it deals with the question, do you agree with Newburyport High School's policy of class rank? Um, one of the limitations of a liker-style survey, which some of the questions were multiple choice, but this one was on a one to five scale, it was on a one, four, five scale. Um, is that people will often leave toward the middle's answer, this is called the central tendency bias. So, when you have freshmen and sophomores who are new to the building, especially freshmen, they haven't really experienced class rank. On a survey, they get, they're gonna be more likely to pick the middle option, because they're neutral on it, because they haven't experienced it. So, because of this, we thought we'd look more at the juniors and seniors who are living and breathing this class rank, who are being affected about it. Seniors who have had their class rank been announced, um, so we'll go further into what just juniors and seniors said.
Right, so as soon as you take, uh, freshman and sophomore out, the data shifts dramatically towards, um, disagree and strongly disagree. As you can see, um, together about forty-three point seven percent of juniors and seniors either strongly disagreed or disagreed. While only eight point seven percent strongly agree. So, as you see, once people, well, once the class ranks becomes a reality, students are starting to have these negative feelings towards it. So, um, one of the other questions was, we asked if, um, keeping class rates was important. Again, this was on a one to four scale, one being very important, four being not important. And this is the whole school's results, and so thirty-five percent of students surveyed across the school reported that they found it not important.
And then, when looking at just juniors and seniors, forty-eight point five percent said they found it not important to keep class rank at NHS. Again, higher than the school at large.
And then if you look at the next one down three, you know, you're almost making three, four, so a five, it's a pretty significant amount of people. Okay, this is a pretty interesting one. From the entire school, when asked how many students in a class should be ranked, twenty-six point eight percent said that all students should be ranked. Nineteen point nine said no student should be ranked. Even though the option of all students being ranked has the most votes, it's a plurality, it has a majority, but with so many categories, it splits them off.
So, again, we focused on juniors and seniors. And this time, approximately seven, seventy juniors and seniors believed that no student should be ranked. So, again, we see this discrepancy between the, the whole school and the juniors and seniors. Who have either been ranked or are just about to be ranked this coming January.
So, this side talks about class rank can create stress. And I think it's important to remember that Newburyport has adopted initiatives like the new schedule change that helped to try to reduce student stress. So, this is from the entire school, and you can see it's pretty even across the board. But when we take out juniors and seniors from what, when we have, um, you see that forty-two point five percent of juniors and seniors report that strongly, that they strongly agree or agree to the student, that class rank does create stress for them. Lastly, we look at the students' opinion on who should speak at graduation. Many, um, proponents said, well, if you're getting rid of class rank, we traditionally have the valedictorian, salutatorian speak, what happened? Um, so about fifty percent, fifty-one point three percent said a person elected by the class. Um, we recognize that the other fifty percent is valedictorian, salutatorian. But we propose eliminating class rank, so there won't be a valedictorian, salutatorian, so therefore they cannot speak.
But it's pretty significant that, um, half the students don't want to elect someone to speak. And, you know, they're graduating and they want someone that they choose to represent them to speak on their experience here. So, we talked to Ms. Blackstock as part of preparing for this, in order to see what schools around our district have gotten rid of class rank. And this is just a brief list of schools and, um, surrounding us that have eliminated it. And there are some private schools and public schools on the list.
Um, so we proposed, just based on the data, that as students get older and class rank becomes more of a reality. The data shows that students are appo- more opposed to class rank. Um, we think that class rank should be eliminated at Newburyport High School. Um, in addition, we think that at graduation, students should be able to elect who they want to speak, multiple speakers. Um, they could elect like two or three instead of the valedictorian and salutatorian.
And we'd like this change to happen as soon as possible. Um, the current juniors will be ranked, um, in like February after their pre-semester, so if logistically that would happen, it happened, that would be amazing.
The fast track.
And, um, just briefly to touch on some personal, uh, Quinn, uh, doesn't know her class rank and refused to check. And so, it's just some students can like not check. And it is possible to go through the application process and not know your class rank.
So, no, we should really, like, it is possible for, like, you don't need to know your class rank for the application process at all.
None of my applications have asked for it, and on the comment app it asked for it, but a discussion with my guidance counselor, um, I reported that I was ranked zero. So, I refused to report, and she said that my counselor reported, and there's no issues with it.
Any questions?
Are grades weighted here?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, are class rank grades.
Based on your weighted GPA.
Yeah.
Yes.
Weight, based on weighted GPAs?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, in effect, back to the five AP classes, students might be, push themselves to take extra.
Pressure.
Honors. And they don't actually want to be taking.
For sure.
For sure. There's definitely.
Honors classes also have a weight?
Yes.
Yeah.
Honors and AP.
Honors and AP, yes.
But not college probably.
Right. So, there's definitely that pressure to take harder classes, especially ones that you're not prepared for. And the whole idea of an AP level class is that it's a college-level class. So, it's hard to say that students and, as freshmen and sophomores should be taking these classes that are meant for college students. They're even challenging like as a junior and a senior, so.
Is there, was there a deeper dive when it says that students were or were not in favor of it? Like a why, like a trend is, like why people would still be in favor of it? I mean, honestly, my, it feels a little old-school to be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ranking it, I don't even like say, you're, you're saying this, the juniors will be ranked, and it feels very, uh, Orwellian.
I think that Newburyport is a school that's based on tradition, and a lot of it is like some deep-seated traditions that a lot of people, um, you know, feel. Like my mom went to Newburyport, she was ranked, so I think a lot of it has to do with like, the tradition of the school.
Does she support you?
Yeah, she thinks that, um, it's a bit outdated.
We did ask, um, the question if keeping class rank is important to you, why? Um, the data, we had, um, thirty-nine point seven percent of the student body said it's not important. Um, eight point seven said it reinforces the rigor of the course. Forty-three percent said that they like to know where they stand academically with their classmates. Thirty-three percent said for college admission, and then twelve point seven percent said it's important to their parents.
So, can you talk a little bit, oh, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Cole?
So, I know you're all seniors, and I know some personally, uh. Did you, and, and, I, I know, I know, I know that I've watched you grow up, a couple of you. Uh, do you know if, uh, well, for disclosure purposes, Ms., uh, Ms., Ms. Conner is right across the street from me, okay? All right, uh, but what, what, what I'm getting at is, uh, and this is really good that you're doing this from, you're looking at the high school. But did you look at any colleges that offer full scholarships for top-ranked students?
Well, when I, I looked into, um, some colleges and their, um, plans, and a lot of colleges now, the, um.
Merrimack College is an example. Uh, I was once on a scholarship selection committee for kids at Triton High School, and there were two, uh, finalists. And one got a full scholarship from Merrimack College because their class, their GPA, and this is my next question for you. Their GPA was a couple hundreds higher than the other student.
Yeah. Okay.
And. I, it was just incredible, because reviewing the scholarships, the scholarships, I saw both their transcripts. And I would beg that, that, uh, and again, they were based on seven semesters, not a. And from what I could see, what I could learn in the interview, the student who was a little behind was actually having a better last semester, but it was over. I mean, the other one, the other student, and both great students. So, I'm hearing what you say about, and I'm not disagreeing with people's feelings about rank. But I just wonder if you're aware of the fact that there are a number of schools that will, whatever it be, class rank or GPA, which to me are one in the same, really. And, 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 you know, don't tell me you don't know your GPAs, okay? Uh, so, you know, let's, you know, what, what, and, and, and I think, I, I think when we were talking earlier. I think everybody wants to do the best they can, student achievement, that's one of the reasons why we're all sitting here as a, as a school committee. We wanna see everyone do the best they can. So, uh, I can understand not wanting the, the rank, but I just wanna, want you to all be real about the fact that in the college admissions process, there are schools that will offer larger scholarships to higher-ranked and higher GPA students.
Right, so most colleges offer scholarships based on GPAs. And we're not saying that we should take away the weights for GPAs, because obviously the harder classes should have a weight. And, but we're saying, what we're saying is that class rank and GPAs should not be given the same level of treatment. Especially when class ranks can be broken down to like the seventh decimal between like the one and the two person.
Yeah.
Should be important to remember that stress piece is like comparing your number to your peers' numbers.
Also, we're looking to, to, um, like some of the honors programs at certain colleges, just as an example, they have requirements where if you have, I think we looked at. UMass and Pershance Honors College, if you have to qualify for their honors program, you need to have a three point seven GPA. And you also need to be in the top ten percent of your class, if your class does class rank, if your school does class rank. But if your school doesn't do class rank, then you only need to fit the three point seven GPA requirement to be considered for the program. So, sort of in the same breath, class rank can harm people's, um, college admissions chances.
I, yeah, that's me.
Maybe this is sidebar. Does a school like that take into consideration the different ways schools weight GPAs?
Yeah, you ask recalibrating your GPA.
Cause a three point seven, one place will not be a.
Yeah, they, I think they recalibrate it.
I, I think every college, when they take a student's application, they recalibrate the GPA based on certain courses that they're looking at for that particular student. So, no matter what we do as far, we, we, we wait and we unwait.
Right.
We do a weighted GPA and we do an unweighted, because for National Honor Society, for example, three nine weighted, three six unweighted. And I've had students get the three six unweighted, but they didn't have a three nine weighted, but they still got into National Honor Society. We're one of the few schools that looks at either or, so.
It's great.
And does National Honor Society take into effect class rank?
It does not.
Okay.
It's strictly GPA.
It, it, may I ask another question? You've listed these schools, thank you very much. Um, do you, do you have an idea of how many, how long they've done, they've done away with their ranks? Is this recent?
I think it's most, for the most part, pretty recent. Um, Ms. Blackstock went to like a counselor's thing.
North Shore Guidance Counselors, and she asked that question.
Okay.
And she just said, you know, how many of you have done away with rank? She didn't ask when. Um, and so she got that response from the schools that had attended that particular meeting.
I, I was just wondering if we had any feedback from any of these schools as to, you know, adverse results? Or, you know, were the kids suffering on their college applications because of it? Or, you know, just, uh, not to pave the road certainly, but to get some information. Um, there are a lot of schools not on this list.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I think there are more schools that would be on this list than what's there. That's just a representative, uh, list, you would find more. And I'd like to point out that one of the schools on this list is consistently ranked the top high school in the state of Massachusetts. And they, they have done away with, with class rank.
That actually helps them do with class rank though. Just putting that out there, it's like, uh, when I was in New York, Scarsdale, could do whatever they want, because they were Scarsdale.
Yeah. Now.
But that's why you're talking about the weighted and the unweighted GPA as well.
These ladies want the change immediately, I would, I would ask to do it starting next year. Because there's another piece to this puzzle that I have to address, and that is our scholarship committees. Because we do have scholarships that say a student has to be a certain rank in order to qualify for the scholarship. I'd have to go back to those committees, scholarship committees, to change their language for the following school year. So, and when they brought up the juniors being ranked, that would impact them the following year. And that's where I'm looking at this, it's, it's almost unfortunately too late for these guys. But I would look at it for the following year implementation, because I have to look at, and we had, I have never, I mean, my secretary handles the scholarship piece. And I, I take part in some of the activity, but I've gotta go back and look at the language for each of those scholarships. Because, again, we're, we're a school based on traditions, and some of those scholarships go back forty, fifty, sixty years or long, or even longer. So, we'd have to take a hard look at that too, and, and make some, uh, language changes on, on what they want for student applications.
Not, not all of them do that though.
Not all of them do, but some do.
I just wanted, I, I just.
Yeah, yeah, it's not every scholarship, but there are some.
So, another interesting aspect about our class rank policy is that, um, you get your class rank revealed to you three different times. And so, there's, you find out, uh, your, for, for the first time, during your junior year. And then you find out again at the beginning of your senior year, and then you find out one last time at the end, when, uh, at the academics night. So, it's really hard for students to watch their grade, like their, their, their class rank fluctuate.
The changes.
And it creates competition too, that's unnecessary. Can you know someone's on your field? Competition that someone's coming up behind you, someone's coming for your spot. Yeah.
So, there's that added stress of knowing, and then knowing it can change.
I'm trying to, other people's class rank?
You don't, it's not released, but taught.
But people talk.
Yeah.
People talk.
Oh, come on.
You know, we.
You know, seriously, when I was in high school, they released everybody's, and you got it on a piece of paper.
Well. We did that up until about three years ago, when we heard from students about the stress it was created. We changed it and said, you, you'll know your class rank if you ask for it, as opposed to us giving it out to everyone. So, we changed that policy a couple of years ago.
Mr. Bennett?
Just a logistical question, what, what's the procedure? What's the role of the school committee in determining whether or not school rank is something we want to do?
I was told that.
Is it a decision, a school committee level decision?
Yes, that's what I was told.
It would be, it would be a part of the, uh, high school handbook.
Yeah.
And therefore, as part of, as part of that handbook, is a part of our official policy. And it's therefore something that we would need to approve.
Any further questions for these ladies who are out there?
Just, again, to just sort of follow up on that.
What's the next step?
Does this, is it a policy, does this go?
Yeah, I, I would say the next step would be for us to take this information and the superintendent, Mike's recommendation, consider it a policy. Tumble it in with everything else that we're tumbling with, uh.
Someone would do it for next year, given what they have to do with scholarship language requirements and things like that.
Sure, but at least if we know that this is their recommendation, we can take a look at our own language, so it's in place, along with all of the scholarship and everything else. The, 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 the student policies are the next part that we're gonna tackle. We've finished, I'm getting ahead of myself here, but we have finished, uh, finances now. So, next, key, next big chunk is, is students. And the reason we have to do that is so that the handbooks can be revised and printed on hand. So, uh, anybody that's particularly interested in those aspects of, uh, policy, please come to our meetings on Saturdays.
And I just wanna say, this is a prime example of students taking the proverbial bull by the horns and doing the work. And, and reaching out to their peers to gather statistical information that gives us an insight into the mindset of students of the twenty-first. to gather statistical information that gives us an insight into the mindset of students of the twenty-first century. And I would hope that you would have listened to them very carefully because I think they did their homework on this. And they've been on my doorstep now for over a year, right, Quinn?
Yeah.
Yeah, and, you know, we, we give each other thumbs up in the hallways periodically, you know, and, you know. It's coming, okay, just hang in there. Don't get too frustrated, cause you know, to ch- change the course of the ship doesn't happen overnight, but it can happen if you do due diligence. And these young ladies are a prime example of someone doing due diligence. So thank you for what you've done.
Definitely. Nice job, girls. Mr. Cole?
Could we just maybe get, could one of these be sent to the school committee members? That's colored and has a little more visual.
Is there an email I can? It's uh just schoolcommittee@newburyport.edu.
SC.
SC.
SC, got it.
And, um, Mr. Parent, at, at the appropriate time, I mean, you've got so much on your mind or whatever, but uh, can you get that scholarship information to the policy committee?
Yes, I'll, I'll, I'll.
Timely manner?
I'll start working with you in on, on.
We don't, we don't, we don't deal with scholarships.
Right.
No, I.
Just, just so they know a.
This is the selection, the, the separate selection committees will have to make that adjustment amongst themselves.
Right.
I don't think that's a, a difficult task for us to.
Oh, okay.
See which ones we'd have to, would have to be changed.
It's a task that needs to be done.
And it's not, you're correct, it's not every one.
But I'd be curious to see as well, how close we are and, you know, how much.
I, I am too. Absolutely. Yep, we'll start that tomorrow.
I don't think we're gonna meet your February deadline.
That's okay.
However, I wanna thank you so much and wish you all well. You're all seniors, right?
Yeah.
So you're already, oh, you don't know your rank. What if you're the valedictorian? Then what happens? She says no, she says no.
It's happened before.
It would be a surprise, that's all.
Thank you, ladies, this was wonderful. Thank you for all your work.
Good job.
Wow.
Good job.
Alright, so I think I'm still logged in, so.
Oh, he, he gone too?
I know.
Alright, we don't have much more this evening, so, um, moving quickly through the rest of our agenda, I think. Ms. Bick, do you wanna give us a budget update?
Well.
Are you prepared to do that?
I am not prepared to do that.
Alright, so what I, what I would like to say, um, we have, um, as far as our budget is concerned, you know, we have a meeting on January twenty-eighth, which is a Saturday. Um, I believe it's from nine to twelve at the Senior uh Community Center to hold a public forum on the budget. So because the, uh, the finance committee was gonna meet this week, but because the superintendent, um, and, and the mayor are unavailable, um, I, um, and they can't do the, the week of the twenty-eighth because I think we're gonna have a, a finance committee meeting, Ms. Lysick suggested, uh, January four.
Okay, so the one for Wednesday's canceled?
I, well, I sent her an, I sent all of you an email suggesting that. But we can't wait till the third Wednesday in January to have our next meeting, cause we won't be able to plan the public forum. So we wanna do it as soon in, uh, January as possible. So I guess that's the only update I have, unless you have something more. Mr. Cole?
No, I don't.
Alright.
I was, I was looking forward to the Wednesday meeting, but I can un-understand.
Well, you could still go. You could still go.
So the budget forum's still on the twenty-eighth?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. And, uh, to remind you, I don't know why I'm doing this now, but, uh, we do have a retreat scheduled on January fifth. So what I would like is for the committee to, um, submit agenda items to me that I can then forward and discuss with the superintendent. Uh, that meeting I think is six to eight or nine. Um, I don't know if it's on our list here, in, uh, this room.
A lot like a retreat.
Tuesday, Jan-, uh, no, wait a minute, that's the school committee business meeting. School committee retreat Thursday, January fifth, six o'clock.
So we're meeting on the fifth and the ninth?
Yes. Well, is the ninth a regular school committee meeting?
No.
What is the ninth?
Second.
New Year's falls late, I think.
It's the third.
So we're meeting the third?
It's on Tuesday.
Tuesday the third?
It's on Tuesday.
But it's on Tuesday because the, New Year is Sunday.
It's twice that week, I believe.
So Tuesday and, okay.
We did talk about that.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just.
And Thursday.
Clarifying.
Any further updates from any, oh, Assistant Superintendent's report?
I just wanted to share two really quick things. This is just a handout that, um, Superintendent Bacaro wanted me to share with you. It's the next inter- iteration of the goals.
Oh, good.
They just keep getting better and better, um, as we continue to work on them. And then I also, um, wanted to share with you that, um, the Mullen School hosted a visiting artist this last week. Uh, Profilio Gutierrez from, um, he is a, um, Zapotec Weaver from Teteetlen, Del. Thank you, help me with this, please. Go ahead.
You know, I wasn't very good.
I know it's not. Go ahead, say, say where he came from.
Teteetlen, Del Valle.
Yes, he did.
And what country are you in?
Wacaca, Mexico.
Thank you.
Yes. I got that part right, didn't I? I, I apologize for my Spanish. But.
Oh, boy.
Profilio Gutierrez.
Yeah.
You better spell it right, if you want it right in the middle.
We'll, we'll get you some script on that.
Well, well. Profilio demonstrated, I do wanna just talk to you about it though. He demonstrated and he spoke about, about their authentic, um, Zapotec weavings, which have, are made from hand spun yarns and are dyed with local plants, minerals, and insects. Um, his family are proud to be descendants from many generations of weavers. Um, and he started his craft when he was a very young child, and all of his family is involved. But throughout the day, students in grade four watched as this artist spoke about and demonstrated his craft using a loom. He then gave the school a sample of his artwork when he left for the day. He spoke to the students in Zapotec, Spanish, and English. During the, um, presentation, the students retreated to a color mixing demonstration using natural dyes and minerals. He talked about the various chemistries that are made up in using natural dyes. It was really very nicely, um, woven into a lot of areas of the curriculum. Um, he has recently accepted a fellowship to the Smithsonian Institute and Harvard University. His work has been included in many galleries and group shows, including a show at the Smithsonian's, the Smithsonian's American India Museum. Um, we were very lucky to have him come. This was one of the Mexican artisans, uh, that comes to us through the Margarita's Restaurant Educational Outreach Program. And, um, each year they help us, um, help provide us with a, a different artisan from Mexico as our students, uh, work on their study of Mexico. And, um, this, uh, these opportunities just provide the students with wonderful insights into the Mexican culture and their folk art. And I had the opportunity to be there. And, um, this presenter was just, it was fantastic. He brought his goods, he gave the, the students an opportunity to purchase little bracelets and things like that. But, um, the rugs and everything, just an incredible piece of artwork that really represents the culture. He talked about all the symbols in the weavings and how important they are in representing their culture. So it was just a great enrichment and a wonderful day, and they wanted you to know about it.
Thank you, that's aw- that's nice. I like that.
Yeah, I like it too.
Anything further from?
They were, that village was a, it was my high school experience.
Was it? Oh, you would have loved to have been there and talked with him.
Didn't get an invite.
Yeah, well, we'll keep that in mind.
Anything further from our subcommittees? No, okay. Um, could I hear a motion to adjourn?
Salute.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And, uh, wish you a very happy holiday season with you and your families from the Newburyport School Committee. Thank you.